Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to our February third, twenty twenty-five, uh, board meeting. And I'd like to ask Greg if he'd say a word of prayer for us. Okay, Mr. Heeks, would you go ahead and say the prayer?
I'm sorry.
Oh, you, you ready, Mr. Slade?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Father, as always, we begin our time together today by coming before you first and foremost acknowledging, Father, that you are our Creator. You are merciful, you are gracious, kind, Father, you provide resources for us. Father, we acknowledge that everything that we are, what we are able to accomplish is solely because of you, your authority, your will, Father, your desire to, to be good toward your children. I pray, Father, that we'll be found worthy to take what you provide to us today, that we would use it effectively, Father, that we would use our time wisely, Father, that you would be pleased with what is said and done here today. And, Father, we'd be careful to come back and return back to you all of the things, all of the thanksgiving that is so definitely needed to be given to you as the one who provides for us. Father, help us to, to take that to heart today. Father, we, we know that we live in a place that is blessed abundantly with safety and security, and we have men and women who sacrifice every single day so that we might enjoy the freedoms that you have bestowed upon us. And we can't thank you enough for their time, their sacrifice, and that of their families, I pray for their protection and Christ's sake.
I'd like to welcome the Hartfield Senior Class, either Government Senior Class, and, uh, I'd like to ask Mr. Graham Jackson if he'd like to come up and say a few words and tell us a little bit about what y'all doing.
Would you all stand up or by yourself?
I guess so. Thanks for having us, uh, we're a group of seniors in Miss Leslie Lee's political science class, and right now we're learning about local state government, and for kind of a project, uh, we are having to stand in at a board meeting and kind of just take notes and, uh, write an essay on that for grade, so that's why we're here, thank y'all for having us.
Okay.
Thanks for being here.
Thank y'all for coming.
Hey, y'all, politics is about knowing who your representative is. Do any of you know who your board member is?
Man, why are you doing like that? Just ignore him, man, it's fine.
This is a big part of your grade right here, your teacher's gonna be.
I'm picking at you, you're representing wearing a white shirt. Not really, I think he and I probably represent the most of you.
Right.
Or the most of your parents.
All right, uh, old business.
I'll make a motion approved minutes on January fifteenth and thirtieth.
Second.
Brad made a motion, Steve second motion, approve the minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries. Does everybody had time to look over the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Any questions on it?
They've been answered.
Make a motion approved.
Second.
Brad made a motion, Scott second motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh. Now we have our tax collector, Ms. Caroline Gilbert.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are y'all?
Good, how are you?
Okay, item A, authority to adjust the length of a mobile home associated with account number two five nine zero four from seventy-two to sixty-eight feet. Authority to void that mobile home tax bill for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, and to reissue these statements allowing for refunds of any amounts paid over the newly adjusted amount.
How much was the difference?
I'm not saying that.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Brad second motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Item B, authority to void the homestead chargeback for PPIN two seven nine five six, it has been dismissed per the Mississippi Department of Revenue.
So moved.
Scott made a motion, Steve second motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And item C, authority to pay registration fees in the amount of three hundred and fifty dollars for Anthony Cirillo to attend the Tax Collector One class, uh, next week in Starkville, and authority to issue that check and pay any travel-related expenses.
I should approve.
Second.
Go ahead, Scott.
Jay made a motion, Scott second motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Stacy, our tax assessor. Everybody loves a tax assessor and a tax collector right in camp.
Tag team. All right, item A, petitions for change of assessment on twenty-four real property assessments, requesting approval for them.
Motion approved.
Second.
Brad made a motion, Scott second motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Um, item B, requesting authority to void the twenty-three tax sale and refund the tax sale purchaser for PIN seven eight one eight nine, and request that a corrected tax statement for twenty-three and twenty-four be generated.
I should approve.
Second.
Jay made a motion, Steve second motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item, requesting authority to void twenty-three tax sale and refund tax sale purchaser for PIN eight four three nine eight. Request that a corrected tax statement for twenty-three, this is lot only, be generated, uh, by the tax collector.
Motion approved.
Second.
Brad made a motion, Scott second motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D, requesting authority to void the twenty-four tax statement for PIN three two seven five one. This is actually titled in the Rankin County School Board, um, this was a billboard location that they, uh, conveyed back to the school board, and so it generated a tax bill. But it should be exempt.
I'll make a motion.
Motion approved.
They made a motion. Steve second the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E, requesting authority for the Collector's Office to issue refunds for PINs one eight four three four, two three seven oh four, and two four nine eight. These PINs were eligible for additional homestead exemption benefits for the twenty-three and twenty-four tax year, so in twenty-three, they filed class ones on these properties, they, and then filed regular homestead, and they just missed them for twenty-three and twenty-four.
Motion.
Second.
Scott made a motion, Jay second motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And he may report this later, but just, um, as a report, we've had just under two thousand homestead applications for January. I don't know if y'all remember, but last year, we barely had more than that for the entire period.
Why is that?
I think it's the update, I think when people, you know, um, maybe receive their bills, it prompted people to get in here. Cause we have had some filings on properties that have been purchased prior to this year, maybe they've never filed homestead. And I also think that we did see some market movement last year, but I think people were kind of just waiting to see what was gonna happen nationally. I mean, it's just an assumption.
Well, hopefully next meeting, we can go without taking any money off the books.
We'll try.
Looks like we had a few more joining us, hear it from Hartfield, y'all, I'd raise your hand, y'all come in a little late. Yeah. Yeah, well, I'm sure the teacher's gonna be proud of that. Yeah, yeah.
I had, I had class this morning.
Right, well, I just.
Future county employees.
Right.
Applications across the hall.
All right. Mike, a road manager?
Uh, request approval, I got the permits here, I need to request approval for utility permit for fiber optical long spillway route, District Two.
So moved.
Second.
Scott made a motion, Steve second motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, B, request a Verizon permit to, uh, stall around Woodland Greens and Grants Ferry, and roads connecting in around the Castle Woods Boulevard, District Two.
So moved.
Second.
Scott made a motion, Brad seconded, all in, any further discussion?
Yes, the Verizon getting into the fiber bin? That's new.
I reckon trying to run it for their title sites, so I don't know. When we started getting some Verizon permits.
On the fiber?
Uh.
That's it.
Any further, is that all discussion? Now we need to vote?
Yep.
Aye.
All in favor, aye. Motion carries.
And hang me up here. Uh, request approval for Center Point, uh, be constructed a new gas line to be installed between Stronghold and New Haven Lane, District Three.
I know the road, but sound, where is that located in District Three?
I'd have to pull it up, I mean, I know New Haven's over there off of.
I believe that's going in the New Haven subdivision.
New Haven subdivision, that, New subdivision, they gone.
Motion approved.
Brad made a motion.
Second.
Scott second motion, looks like we got a little further discussion, Jay and Steve, y'all good?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, D, to request Metro to construct in a sewer line along Dogwood Trail, District Four.
Motion.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Jay second motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's all I got.
Hey, give us an update on our, uh, site prep.
Where?
Donsters.
Oh. Well, we're actually moving forward, we've, uh, started excavating out, we've issued some POs for some material, and we're starting to walk right now. It's under, underway right now, so if the weather hold off, week or two, we can get some foundation.
Week or two.
I need a week or two, but, um.
I don't think you're gonna get it.
But anyway, this week looks good.
So how many bays are we going to construct?
Be six.
Six? So how are we gonna do the, uh, uh, recycling bins?
It'll be just a flat slab that we'll end up doing for it.
It's gonna be the same ones we have?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, well, we're gonna use the compactor that we had over at the reservoir gate, and then we're gonna put a, a door one, so when the compactor's gone, we'll have a spare one. There'll always be a recycled bin sitting there, when, cause when they come get that compactor, when they leave, there's nothing there.
Okay.
So we'll have a draw one be putting in while the compactor's gone.
Has a power bin?
Working on all that, we've got the addresses, we're trying to get accounts done, everything, you know, that's, everything's moving along that way, we've got the water line run, got Brandon's gonna put his water meter in, and we're starting to move forward on everything, it's just, weather's hasn't held up on a lot of this project, so, uh. But everything's back moving forward on.
Is asphalt plants back up, are they running this week?
Asphalt plants are back up, started last week running, so everybody's back up and running.
Okay.
Uh, temperature's gotten better, what we can do.
Right.
I think, you're asking probably more toward Gunner Road, I, uh, talked to the contractor Friday. They're actually supposed to start tying in aprons and driveways this week on Gunner Road, so.
All right, good deal.
About all shit to start falling into place this week, just, had to get out of these cold temperatures.
Right, I know, that's what I've been telling, it's been cold till it starts, temperature starts getting forty-five and rising, it, you know, you don't like to put asphalt down.
And the problem is, is the first day it gets there, everybody.
Everybody wants it right then.
Right, so, but everybody is starting all falling, fall back in the place a little bit.
Right, good, good deal.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Parker?
Morning.
Good morning. County engineer?
The first item we have on the agenda is approval of State Aid Project SAP program, uh, that's would be the large overlay for this term. Uh, it's a scrub seal and ultra-thin, uh, it's about nineteen and a half miles of, uh, overlay. Be Florence Baumroad, North Shore, Star Brandon Road, uh, portion of it, not the whole thing, uh, Midway Road and Lutney Road, we recommend an approval of that program.
I should approve.
Second.
Jay made a motion, Steve second motion, any further discussion?
On that Star Brandon, which end they start?
It's, uh, it'd be Bethel towards eighteen, uh, that, that's where it stopped, the last time there was an overlay there, it stopped right there at Bethel, so it'd be from Bethel towards Brandon.
How many miles is this?
Uh, nineteen and a half, I think.
So is that a combination of?
Three projects.
Overlay and?
No, there, there'll be, there'll be scrub, no, scrub seal, so it's a scrub seal before the ultra-thin overlay. It's, all, all that goes on the same road, we did it on Shell Oil Road, under a State Aid project last term.
It's a chip seal with.
Yes, yes, so basically, it's, you're sealing all the cracks with a scrub seal, then coming back with an ultra-thin, cause you, you don't have, that way you don't have to mill it.
Kind of like what we get on, uh, North Shore, that bridge across there?
Oh, boy, yes. Yes.
Do we vote?
Call it over.
Well, I have one more question, so we're gonna go from Bethel Road toward Brandon?
Yes, sir.
And not coming from Bethel Road toward forty-nine?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, we got a motion, need to vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is the, uh, cancellation of, uh, State Aid Program sixty-one eight S. That was a program we threw in there last term in case the overlay project, uh, underran, uh, it didn't. Uh, this was a reseal project, obviously those roads now, uh, have passed the reseal stage, and so, uh, there's no need for that project, they'll either be, I think North Shore was in it, they, they'll either be incorporated in it or done under a county project.
Need a motion?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Scott second motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, Mr. President, is the Preserve subdivision, I would recommend an approval of those construction drawings. That's a PRV development off of, uh, Highway forty-three, uh, out by Tommy Strading Post, obviously District Two developed.
And this is the one we spoke about recently?
Yes, sir.
Motion.
You good with that?
Second.
Scott made a motion, Jay second motion, any further discussion?
How you doing the development on that? Is it, uh, the foreback's name?
Minchi?
Minchi?
Uh, S- Spencer Sykes is involved in it, I know, I, I don't know who's in it with him, but, uh, it's, it's under a development name, but I, I don't.
So I was asking, was the guy who owns that, uh, that restaurant out there?
Uh, at, uh, the sunset?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know if that is or not.
I, I don't know, I know, uh, Mr. Minchi was involved in some on, that they're, they're doing on, uh, Lake Harbor Drive, right around the corner, so, maybe him too, but I know Spencer Sykes is in that.
So, uh, four seventy-one extension where it comes in and tees into forty-three?
Yeah.
When you turn left on forty-three off of four seventy-one extension.
It's right there.
Immediately on your left.
Yes, sir.
Between, before you get to Sunset.
Yep.
Uh, we've had a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D, Mr. President, is on our, uh, Melamed ARPA project, program Melamed four point oh nine. We recommend an approval of change order number one for an increase of fifteen thousand and twenty dollars. Uh, the authorization is based on specific findings by the board, as shown below. Uh, this is just a little ex, uh, addition of, uh, we've got a ditch that, uh, had some pipe in it, and the pipe was real shallow and has floated up. That pipe needs to be taken out and open ditch, so this is just, uh, and then put some stabilization in that ditch, so this is just, uh, adding that to the project.
I make the motion to approve.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Scott second motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Slayer, Board Attorney. Looks like we still, still got some more coming in from the Hartfield.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Quickly, I'm, I'm grateful that we have a local school that, uh, is interested in local government, uh, even if it's because their teacher makes them do it. I'm, I am grateful for them to be able to come and to participate, uh, in, uh, in observing how local government operates. Uh, I think that's a great part of an education process, and I applaud them for doing that. Uh, first three items under my section, Mr. President, are to set public hearings for February the fourteenth at nine AM, I'd ask for one motion on AVNC, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Brad second motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. President, item D is not to be discussed today because we've already set that matter for another date, and so, uh, we will skip over item D. Item E will be a public hearing on the Bobby Elmore Tracks LLC Conditional Use Permit, this is Highway twenty-five parcel, this is a District Four parcel, parcel. I'm gonna open that public hearing, uh, Bobby Elmore Tracks LLC is seeking a conditional use permit to mine four acres of a seventy-eight point thirty-nine acre parcel. Uh, the property is owned A two, which allows for mining through a conditional use permit. Mr. Elmore is proposing to enter and exit the property off of Highway twenty-five. He has received his MDEQ four acre notice of exempt mining permit, uh, and that form has been provided to our staff. Uh, it, he is in contact with MDOT, uh, concerning all of the traffic and safety requirements and approvals. Uh, the board has, I'm sorry, our, uh, office community development has received no calls in opposition on this requested permit. Uh, that public hearing is open, I'll ask at this time if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Bobby Elmore Tracks LLC Conditional Use Permit. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? See that our friends from Hartfield do not have any opposition that they wish to voice.
Well, I thought Mr. Oldham raised his hand.
Uh, goodness, no cau- uh, no calls in opposition, doesn't appear to be anyone here, gentlemen, to speak in opposition on this matter, unless the board has questions of the applicant, I'll go through the list of conditions with you, uh, and then if you do have any condi- uh, questions concerning the conditions. Here are the conditions that, uh, generically and typically we associate with any request for a mining operation. Uh, we would set hours of operation Monday through Saturday, seven AM to seven PM, and that's during central daylight time, it's eight to five during standard time. Uh, no Sunday operations, that's a standard condition that we use. Number two, uh, we require the, uh, the holder of the permit to have a water truck on site, and this is for the purpose of dust control. Um, the third is, we typically require some sort of protection of the motoring public, some sort of signage as you approach the, um, access and ingress egress to this mining operation that alerts the motoring public that there will be trucks, dump trucks entering the highway. Uh, we require the applicant to keep the road, in this case, it'd be Highway twenty-five, free and clear of all debris on a daily basis, and be responsible for any damage associated with any county roads that are part of any hauling permit that would be, I'm sorry, a haul road that would be established by the road department for this usage. And this conditional use permit is granted only for the four acre exempt mine location, that should be obvious. Uh, and typically, we will require the applicant to stake that four acre section that has been permitted through N D Q, N D Q off so that it's easily observable by our staff. So those would be the conditions that we would suggest here, I'd ask that those be made a part of the motion.
Didn't state need to approve something also?
Yes, sir, so an additional condition, Jay, would be that, uh, the applicant is required to have final permit approval for the ingress egress onto Highway twenty-five before this conditional use permit will be effective.
This, uh, is in my district, it's in the very north part of the county, and we are experiencing a tremendous push for new development, which requires a lot of dirt, generally. Uh, this is as close to being a perfect situation that I will approve a dirt pit in my district. Uh, we have a lot of them, and we think we have plenty, uh, but when they get to building houses, and one house can need two hundred loads or more, it doesn't take long we run out. But this is on a state highway, four lane, and it's really MDOT's baby. Uh, it's a long way from where this site will come on to twenty-five until the next exit to where it's not just jumping on and off, and anyhow, it's, uh, I think it's a good thing for the county and for that area to be able to access the dirt and not have the other problems that go along with the dirt pit in general. So I'm gonna vote to approve.
Steve, would that be your motion to, uh, incorporate the conditions as, as voiced?
As said, yes.
Yes, sir, all right.
I'll second.
Steve made a motion, Brad second motion, any further discussion?
So just be clear, if they don't keep the road clear, we can shut it down.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
And they have a, you know, we gotta get a permit from the.
MDOT.
High, MDOT.
Yep.
Also, yeah.
Yep.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President, the next item, gentlemen, is a discussion of a potential action concerning the local election referendum. Uh, this has to do with, uh, the request that's been, uh, made by one or more of the board members concerning our stormwater management program, our stormwater management efforts. As a brief history and for the benefit of our friends, uh, in the back of the room, uh, this board has been actively engaged in a process that is hopeful to lead to a solution for stormwater challenges that all of the citizens of Rankin County face, uh, that this board has to deal with on a constant basis. Uh, it should surprise no one that, especially in extraordinary rain events, uh, Rankin County, being a relatively flat county, uh, has challenges with rainwater, stormwater, moving, uh, the way that God created the land drain. Uh, and sometimes there are issues that develop from that. Flooding, uh, water overtopping roads, uh, water getting into folks' houses, um.
Erosion?
Erosion, drainage channels that, uh, that are choked because they've got debris in them, or they've sedimented, uh, any number of other challenges, and it's the kind of challenge that pretty much all political subdivisions across the state of Mississippi have to deal with. Uh, and this board in particular has taken the position, we'd be better off if we try to address it, uh, at the county level. If there's any way to address these challenges long-term, it needs to be done at the county level, and it needs to be done cooperatively, and we need to figure out a way, if at all possible, to have capable folks and equipment and a plan and a strategy, and specifically, a funding source to provide for the cost of handling all of that. Uh, and so the thought process is, a way to do that would be to create a specific agency of county government that is authorized to go wherever in the county these challenges exist, and try to address them scientifically, if at all possible. To do that, there has to be an authorization to do it, there has to be a law that provides the authority to do it. There happens to be a law that can be utilized, it's been in existence for the better part now of about forty years. That joint stormwater management district law has only been used one time in the state of Mississippi, but it is available for any other qualifying political subdivision to be able to utilize. So this local election referendum would be a process whereby this board can ask the question on a ballot of the citizens of Rankin County, do you want county government to be involved specifically in stormwater management? And if so, do you understand that there would be a cost to doing that? That activity is going to cost the citizens of Rankin County to be involved in that. Are you willing for county government to undertake that responsibility at a cost? So this being a local election referendum, which is authorized by state law, it is non-binding. I want to be clear, it is non-binding. The citizens of Rankin County will not be voting to establish anything, they will be expressing their opinion. They will be expressing their opinion to their county government leaders. And it would be up to this body to actually act to establish it. What you are suggesting by, by creating a local election referendum is we would like to hear from the citizens of Rankin County whether they're interested in that. How strongly do they feel about it? And it may be that the citizens of Rankin County decide they don't, they are not interested in that at all. And you would like to know that, wouldn't you? Before you go through the process of standing up some organized district and setting out some sort of fee structure that gets applied and applied to a tax bill and ultimately sent out for folks to have to deal with and pay and complain about. You'd like to know about that ahead of time. How interested citizens of Rankin County are you in creating an additional layer of county government that has to be funded, that has a specific purpose of addressing intractable stormwater challenges all across the county? This board has tried hundreds of ways to deal with these challenges through the years. I personally have been a part of hundreds of those creative options that unfortunately are kind of localized. They don't really work when you try to do it at the countywide scale. You can attack small areas and deal with those challenges on a sm- on a small basis. But the solution to the problem lies all the way out to the county borders and beyond. The solution for us, gentlemen, is a lot more scientific in its orientation than political. But there's a very real political part of this, which is, most of the time, folks would prefer not to pay more for services. They like to get services and not pay more for them. And that's a hard thing to do as political leadership. But you know, at the end of the day, it costs money to run this outfit. If you're gonna have good qualified people to help you, you gotta pay them. If you're gonna have work that is ongoing, you gotta equip it. There's costs and somebody's got to pay for that. Here's another thing to think about, gentlemen. I have, again, I've been at this now for the better part of what, almost twenty years? Y'all kept me around for way too long. Uh, and I've probably worn out my welcome. Don't, no comments from anybody else in here. But over twenty years, what I have discovered, espec- especially about trying to solve stormwater management problems, is that there is not another game in town here. There's not a private entity that is equipped to deal with it. There's not private citizens that are equipped to deal with it. How many times have we seen requests come from subdivisions specifically? Is there any way you can help us, please? We are choking on too much rainwater. Surely, surely the county can step in and help us with this. And invariably, we have to tell them, we don't have the authority. Your problems are on private property. We cannot go on private property and spend taxpayer dollars to help with that. That is the answer we invariably have to give all over the county. And so, we have to tell those folks sometimes, the solution to your problem actually lies with the private property owners gathering together and trying to solve that problem with private dollars. And we may be talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars in cost to address the problem. There's not another game in town. It's either gonna be a government responsibility to deal with these issues or we're gonna continue to tell folks, you're on your own. There's not another option. So what you have, um, established today for your, for the purposes of this time that we're talking about right here, you are simply now engaged in deliberations about how do we stand up a local election referendum? You have the authority to do that. So what is the process going forward? At some point, you have to adopt a resolution that tells the circuit clerk and the election commissioners, we want a local election referendum and we want it scheduled according to our legal authority to do it. You gotta tell them that. Otherwise, you, you don't have a local election referendum. It has to be on a ballot and it has to be a part of a normal election process. So the proposal would be that you adopt a resolution to establish a local election referendum and that you set it according to the law at the next available opportunity, which is the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November. Like every election that we have here, whether it's regular or general or special. The first Tuesday after the first Monday in November.
Which be November fourth.
November the fourth. And you would say to your circuit clerk and to your election commissioners, we want a ballot referendum. And you have to tell them specifically, you, the board supervisors, y'all control this entire process. You have to tell them, if that's your choice, that you want a local election referendum on this question, you have to tell them exactly what the ballot question will be. Word for word, you have to tell them. You do that in your, your, uh, resolution, by the way. You say, we want a local election referendum on this question. We want it set for November the fourth, two thousand twenty-five, on the ballot. And we want that ballot question to read as follows. And you lay it out. Okay? Uh, at, uh, At our last opportunity, you were given, Steve, you were not here. You had, you had to leave, uh, for an emergency situation. And so, Steve, you didn't, you didn't hear that. I've got some wording that I'll share, uh, for Steve's benefit. That could be, could be your valid initiative question, but doesn't necessarily have to be. You guys have to establish what that is. This could work. It would read like this. The county, the Rankin County Board Supervisors is considering the creation of a countywide stormwater management agency whose purpose will be to address drainage, erosion, and flooding problems throughout Rankin County and its cities. The propose, the proposal includes the establishment of a fee to be paid by property owners on an annual basis to fund the agency's operations. The estimated fee for residential properties is one hundred dollars per year. The first question would be, or the first answer would be, I am in favor of the proposal. The second option would be, I am against the proposal. That's about as simple as I can make it. And it leaves unanswered questions, obviously. But the general tenor here is that the majority of the citizens who will participate in that election own a home, own property that is residential in nature. They, they live somewhere. And if they're voting in Rankin County, they live in Rankin County. They are qualified electors of Rankin County. So you're not asking for anybody that doesn't live here to participate in this referendum. Does that make sense? There will be people, by the way, who own property in Rankin County but don't live in Rankin County. So that would not be homestead property for them. They may own rental property. They may own commercial properties. But that's not being addressed here. What's being addressed is residential properties. This board has consistently said, whatever we come up with, that's a scheme to address stormwater challenges. I, I've heard loud and clear, this board has said, we want residential properties to pay an annual fee that does not exceed one hundred dollars. Did I miss anything? That's what I've heard from day one. You own a home in Rankin County and we're gonna deal with stormwater challenges through some sort of organized process, your fee will not exceed a hundred dollars a year. Basically, eight dollars a month.
But isn't it?
Commercial and industry?
Yes. Though, those parcels, Steve, through our system are designed because they contrib- this is where the science comes in. Commercial properties, industrial properties will contribute more to the stormwater challenges than other kinds of properties. They have bigger roofs. They have larger parking facilities. And all of those kinds of impervious structures shed stormwater at a faster rate, at a gra- a greater rate than a house. They, they will pay more. This is where the science comes in.
So this is not addressed for them to be considering?
Unless this board feels strongly that we put more information in the question. What I, what I was trying to do with this first pass is to narrow the question down so that it didn't require somebody to sit there and read the ballot for twenty minutes, Steve. I was trying to keep it simplified.
And it's not binding, so?
It's non-binding.
You can just give us an idea of the majority of the people?
That's correct. And, and a lot of those commercial properties, Steve, are gonna be owned by people who can't participate in this election. I, I, I keep coming back to that.
Yep.
Another question. So the municipalities, they can opt out?
They, they can, once this board establishes the structure. We're now far beyond this referendum, Brad. They're gonna get to participate in this election, but they may not necessarily have to participate in the structure. Because as the statute clearly states, there has to be voluntary participation. Even though this board could establish the district and say it's gonna be countywide, each of our municipalities will have the option to either participate in the district or not.
All right. In this ballot, this election, um, what is the proportion of voters that live in city limits that could later on be a city that's opted out? When you take Flowood, Pearl, Brandon,
Lawrence, Richland.
Richland and Florence. When you take those, what's the proportion of those votes versus everybody else?
I don't know how accurate this is, but anecdotally, Steve, we say about half of our citizens, qualified electors live inside of city limits and about half don't. About fifty-fifty.
And as far as the ballot goes, in November, in November, there's only gonna be two things. It's gonna be in District Four and one in District Three.
That's important to remember.
And there's not, nothing in the rest of it.
Yeah, I wanna make it clear.
We haven't paid for our countywide election.
Yes, sir. That is correct. Thank you, Brad.
We got, uh, how many voting precincts we got? Thirty? A lot?
Forty-eight?
More than thirty.
Forty-nine?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine precincts typically?
We got about ten.
We elect the staff and pay for them.
That's correct. That's another interesting dynamic here. Your next available opportunity for this is November twenty-five. But you could say, well, we'll just wait till, uh, a, a more, um, a, an election where there's a, a greater level of participation or where we're gonna have all of our voting machines out anyway. That's not gonna be until November twenty-sixth. That's a long time to wait to try to get on top of this issue that we've been trying to deal with. But Brad is correct. Currently, your November twenty-five election contemplates only two county district votes. So, election commissioner and, uh, justice court judge. And they're both, they three?
No, three and four.
Three and four. All right, so you got two, two of your districts that are gonna be engaged in a special election. Two, to do a county referendum vote. You're gonna roll out all of your machines and you're gonna have all your precincts.
Well, election commissioner is gonna be a very, then, it's not gonna draw any more people or maybe not as many people as this watershed program initiative. So it doesn't, you know, when you say other areas in the county that du- who have nothing on about it, it's not that much difference in District Four.
Yes.
But.
But, but you do have to get the machines out, Steve. You gotta get the ballots prepared.
We do in District Four anyhow.
Yep. So that's a challenge, that's a little bit of a challenge. There's an additional cost there, but it's an effective way to find out what your voters want or don't want.
It's gonna be who gets?
The people out.
The people out. And I think Jay's got, uh, he's got a plan and I'm gonna stick with him. I'm gonna stick with him.
I, I need feedback before we stick a resolution in front of you guys. I gotta have feedback on language.
I can like what you put there.
Yeah. Is there, is there an opt-out deadline? Is there, is there?
That'll be in the statute. That'll be, a- all of that or every bit of that is details. Once we get to the point of deciding as a group, we're gonna do this. Literally, all we're finding out here, I think, is, we're either gonna keep talking about this or we're not. So there's a whole lot more to talk about once we get past this.
We still got to word it and go through.
Exactly. And I think we're well into twenty-six before we have anything in the way of an organized approach to establishing a district, populating its board. We, we're well into twenty-six before we even get something formalized. And then you're, you're going to have to establish your fee structure formally, have it on a tax bill and start collecting some form of revenue from the participants of the district to fund the operations of the district.
I'm fine having it on the ballot, but I'm not good with
The date.
The, the date. And I mean, y'all can vote for it or whatever, but I mean, that's, I just, I mean, the cost of having a countywide election is probably gonna be over a hundred thousand dollars. And you're not gonna have a lot of people to come out and vote. I think it'd be a better time, some other time, following year or whatever, but. I'm just one person.
I, I agree with Brad, except we've probably spent nearly a hundred thousand dollars in the last year with engineering and lawyer and different things, trying to get to the point of deciding, are we gonna do this? And I don't wanna do that again.
Well, I think that material will be there the next year too.
Two years, three years old?
The only thing I'll say about the twenty-six election is that's, that's when we're gonna be voting for your House Representative, uh, Mr. Guest to be on the ballot, I assume. Be on the ballot in twenty-six. And so that will be a countywide election. We're all in his district. So he'll be on the ballot. Uh, there'll be others that'll be on that mid-year ballot. There's other possibilities that'll be on that. You never know when you're gonna have to have a special election anyway. We have people coming and going and, uh, vacancies in office. And so we're likely to have some sort of county special election in twenty-six. So, uh, so there's probably gonna be more participation in twenty-six. I, I can't help but predict that. It's up to this board. This is completely volunteered. You're not mandated to do this.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion to approve this, uh, set of referendum for November fourth, two thousand twenty-five.
Jay, would your motion be, uh, to adopt a resolution to that effect and to populate that resolution with the appropriate ba- ballot language?
Absolutely. Yes, that's my motion.
Thank you.
Jay made a motion.
Second.
Scott, second to motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we got one A and four I.
Gentlemen, thank you. I will, uh, get busy getting the resolution together for y'all.
So when is a good time to discuss the, uh, the company that bought eighty lots and plans on building houses?
I, I, I don't see why we can't have that as an additional business item. Mister Bishop, you good with that? Do you, do we want Keith to go ahead with his section?
You don't, you don't keep this and then do it?
Mister Hicks?
Good morning, gentlemen. Um, item A is approval of master services agreement.
Good morning, gentlemen. Um, Item A is approval of master services agreement, and this will be with, uh, Pillium and, uh, in the county for IT-related services. This company is just a, it's just a standby contract in case we need some work. We have some uh, rates and hours already set. Uh, they did some fiber hurt for us, and they've really done a good job for us, and we just wanna put them on standby with this services agreement.
Motion to approve.
Steve made a motion. Jay seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Item B is, uh, discussion of potential action on the request received from the town of Pilahatchee for the use of our voting equipment for, uh, twenty-twenty-five municipal elections.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
That we have in the other cities.
Yes.
Steve made a motion. Scott seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Item C is authority to advertise for proposals, uh, for the collection of our household hazardous waste for this spring.
Make the motion approve.
Second.
Brad made a motion. Scott seconded the motion. Any further discussion?
Still gonna be the same drop-off place?
Yes, sir. It'll be at the, uh, only purpose for the.
What date?
We haven't said an exact date yet. We'll come back with you once we get all the counters lined up.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yes, sir.
I'm just handy.
So, uh, yeah, there was eighty lots that Scott made was intending to buy, but for some reason pulled out. And so our national company has come in and bought them. I just wanna make sure that we have, maybe, I don't know how we can address it. Uh, can we actually have a list of, uh, how they submit their, whatever flooring, whatever materials they're gonna do? Can we have them submit everything to us?
Well, they submit their square footage now on there, but as far as materials?
As far as cabinets? What grade cabinets that they intend to use?
I don't see how you can, I mean, that's fine, but I don't see how you can regulate on what kind of cabinets they put in.
You know, that's why I'm asking. Can we?
Where are these lots at?
They're.
Cedar Ridge or Cedar or something.
Cedar Lane.
Cedar Lane.
Cross from.
It's a subdivision that's been going on for like ten years, that bankruptcy and stuff and.
Actually, longer.
Maybe longer. I don't know.
Yes, sir.
Like buying dirt out of there. They've hauled dirt back in, and it's just one of them deals.
I recall, and this is, Brad, help me, this probably goes back three years ago. We met with Ms. Parram. I, I remember being in that meeting. This predates, uh, Scott and Sid.
I think it was when Bob was here.
Uh, it may have been. Uh, but I distinctly remember meeting with the owner of the property, Mr. Parram. At, well, I say he's the owner. It, it's a corporate ownership underlying it, but he was here as representative of the developer. Uh, and in that meeting, there was lengthy discussion about the plans for the development. Uh, this particular subdivision development is located in close proximity to an existing manufactured housing uh, situation. And so there was much discussion about the zoning on the property and whether or not it was amenable to a continuation of a manufactured housing development. And after all of that discussion, and, uh, Mr. Morrow, I believe, Mr. Morrow's expressed desire that we move towards conventional construction and away from a manufactured housing setup. Uh, the developer said, I can live with that. What, what are my square footages, et cetera, et cetera? And of course, like any developer, he wanted as little additional regulation as possible. And so we had to kind of stand on it to make sure that we had an appropriate square footage for that development. Uh, and so the square footage requirements for this conventional fi- uh, construction is significantly more than the manufactured housing. And so it's an improvement in that respect from the standpoint of square footage.
I think on the roof, it's seventeen hundred.
Yeah, it's a, it's, it's a much different, it should provide for a much different, um, resetting of the development potential for other surrounding properties there, because we're moving away from the manufactured housing setup and into more conventional. So I think that's gonna help with future development along that area. Also, the square footage is being significantly more than you're seeing on adjacent property. Also, that's a good pattern moving forward that we're gonna expect more square footages. Mr. Bishop's concern, rightfully so, is that there is a history with this particular developer, company, of, uh, of a pattern of behavior in other places in the United States where they, uh, they like to construct developments in a, almost an assembly line fashion. They have economies of scale that we're not used to seeing here, frankly. Uh, reportedly, they own, this company owns and controls some of the supplier chain like a Lowe's or a Home Depot, and can actually bring in materials at the, at the franchise scale. It's, that's, that's not a development plan that we're familiar with seeing across the board. And so because of some concerns that a developer of that magnitude could come into a situation, and because they have priorities that are in some other place in the country, the whole activity in our area could just shut down for a lengthy period of time while they move to some other pla- place to deal with some other issue. And so Jay is, has expressed some level of concern. We wanna make sure that we have a way to kind of oversee how it is that they're gonna develop out in our area.
I agree with you. What City of Pearl doing?
They're not doing this. I mean, they, they have their regular inspectors out there.
But I mean, are they monitoring what they bringing in or not? Because I know they developing a lot of that out there.
I mean, as long as they're going by the, you know, inspection, I mean, I know they've got, uh, prefab, you know, prefab cabinets in some of the houses.
They have told that they were like mobile home break cabinets.
I wouldn't, well, I hadn't, I can't say 'cause I hadn't seen, been in every house, and I have been in.
Two of them were one door. Yep. And I mean, it was, I mean, it's it's nice. I mean, I don't know.
Uh, might not be what we see when you see eighty of them.
Yeah.
You know, this was one, this is showhouse.
Right. And they always make them look good. I started asking, what is their mom?
Let, let me see if I can summarize, Jay. You tell me if I'm kind of on target here or not. Jay is, I think, is suggesting that our community development folks, folks that we send out in the field have a lot of questions that need to be answered. And, uh, and that while it may not necessarily be a part of the permitting process, it's a part of, uh, how we expect the active, the construction activity to kind of unfold here. We'd like to see the materials show us. We want to see, tell us where in Rankin County we can go to see what you contemplate, this particular house that you're intending to put right here, what is it gonna look like? I wanna walk through that.
Yeah.
Where in Madison County could I go to see that construction right there that y'all done? I wanna look at it. Have our inspectors actually go and look at the materials. Tell us, is the sheetrock commensurate with what we see around here?
I believe, I got a call week before last from Madison County, and they had a developer or to the supervisor that I spoke to, that the developer lied out, lied to them, turned around, sold three hundred and twenty-seven lots to the old.
And see, I don't know how you can prevent that. I mean.
You can't.
Right. All, all we can do is just police it, make sure that they're following our building codes.
That's correct.
Right. You know, you can't stop them, but we can.
You guys have already, uh, loudly and clearly, you've changed your zoning ordinance to reflect that we are not allowing build-to-rent operations in Rankin County, period. We're not allowing them. They have to be specifically classified by zoning application, by zoning, uh, classification. Uh, and they have to be located in specific zoning classes, uh, and there are a multitude of additional requirements that go with any kind of build-to-rent operation. What am I talking about, build-to-rent? That's literally where the developer comes in and says, I'm going to build all of these residential structures, and I'm going to hold title to all of these residential structures, and I'm going to rent them to the occupants. That's build-to-rent.
And they pay full taxes on it.
They'll brag on, it's only fifty-eight percent rental.
Sir.
They will brag, I'm not saying this one, but that we're only fifty-eight percent rental.
Yes, sir.
And they also do in-house financing.
Yes.
Uh, it's, I mean, Rankin County is a community, and whether you're in Florence or whether you're in Piscatawagoo, we kind of look out for each other, and we like hiring our own subs. We like knowing the guy that's a plumber, to where if he doesn't do a good job on this house and we shut him down, don't just shut him down this house, he's got to come back to us in the future. And when you start letting this type of stuff come in.
Yes, sir.
It destroys the community, the community of Rankin County.
Oh, and they're strong too. They're giving five percent interest rates.
Yeah, they'll do it. And then in a year or two, it'll be ten, then it'll be fifteen, whenever you miss a number, you know?
Yeah, what, this board has, uh, has expressed some concerns about development activities that are changing and shifting, the landscape shifting, and we're trying to make sure that we've got a good feel for where the future might go. Jay's point, I think, uh, putting words in your mouth, Mr. Bishop, I, I think Jay's point is this. These houses in particular are gonna be starter homes. These are gonna be young families, and so there's some level of concern that we make sure, that this body makes sure that when young cu- couples come and want to buy their first house and start their families, they're not buying something that's substandard. Right? They're gonna pay their harder money for a quality product, and we wanna make sure that our developer community is delivering a quality product. It's, I'm telling you, it's expensive.
Specifically is our highest density we have, and I think it's R-one B.
It's R-one C.
R-one C.
It's even more dense.
Yeah, so, yeah. And I know at Pearl, they screwed up. One of them, they put the air conditioner.
On the other guy's lot.
On the other guy's lot, yeah. They, they had to move.
We cut the.
To the other side of the house.
We cut the lots back on this. At one time, it was gonna be a hundred or so.
That's eighty lots.
How many square feet's a lot?
Um, what's?
They're gonna be sixty-five hundred?
I think it's seventy-five, it's seven thousand square feet.
But that was already approved or?
R-one C allows for sixty-five hundred.
We had a chance to do this when Bob was here, when we did our company's plan.
Minimum lot area is seven thousand.
Well, I heard somebody say seventeen hundred square feet under roof, so that could be twelve hundred square feet.
It's thirteen hundred. But heated and cooled is thirteen hundred.
Thirteen hundred.
The two-car garage has to be attached to this structure. This was a consideration that Bob wanted. Uh, and so that adds, that adds the under roof, the additional under roof footage to pick up the garage. But the, the view of the house will be larger than you would anticipate a thirteen-hundred-square-foot house looking. These are starter homes, gentlemen. We, we've got young couples in Rankin County who cannot afford more than thirteen hundred heated and cooled.
And we need those.
We need them. We don't have very many of those at all. This seems to be a good place for them. To Jay's point, though, we want a quality end product.
Right. I, I agree. I mean, we, there's definitely a need for them, but we just need to make sure our building department, you know, is inspecting and, and they're getting a good quality house for what they're paying for.
I, I would like to have our guys who know what they're looking at, that's not me, but our inspectors, I'd like for them to go somewhere in the metro area and look specifically at what they are proposing to build there. Show me what you are intending to build.
Yeah, we can, we can do that.
I'm gonna say this. This is not my district, but I do not want this anywhere in my district. Uh, those eighty that are starter homes, and that's tastes good, it sounds good, it fifteen years from now, or twenty years from now, you come in and tell me what they are. They're gonna be nuisance properties all in there, and we, we do need housing for our young couples, but you put eighty of them so close together, you get the air conditioner on the other guy's lot.
Yep.
Might as well be living in an apartment. I mean, they're this far apart, and.
Steve, if you've got any R-one C in your district, I would be shocked. I don't think you have.
If I do, take it out.
Yeah. Mr. Bishop, are you satisfied that, that we've got some sort of plan on that? Uh, gentlemen, I wanted to remind you, we're, uh, we have asked, uh, we, we have indicated and are, will be asking later today of our two proposers on our e- electric and other utility efficiency situation, will be asking them to specifically give us a propos- a cost proposal on specifically identified county buildings and properties. If y'all wanna see that list, I can send that to you. I just need to know that you wanna look at it, if you're satisfied that we know what we're asking for.
I'm ready to award it.
Okay. Well, we're, we're gonna get a cost.
We got it.
Well, we got, we got one.
Yep.
We didn't, we didn't allow the other to tell us what, because they don't know to s- submit a proposal. So, uh, with your permission, we'll get that pushed out by email today with an attachment?
Well, I thought we talked about this, uh.
Two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Well, we, what we talked about was getting them to send us a proposal with a cost. They haven't gotten the specific, neither one of them has seen the specific buildings that we want evaluated. Neither one of them has seen that.
If the cost is zero, does that make a difference?
I, I'd like to know, what, what buildings are you gonna evaluate at zero? Because they may say, I don't know, Jay.
Well, they gave, we gave them our electric bills, so they have all of our facilities.
They have all of them. Do they have all the facilities? My list?
Go ahead and nod. Yes, you can do that.
Alright, I guess we'll prolong this another four meetings, but I'm ready to go ahead and award it.
You, our next meeting's on the fourteenth.
Happens behind this speech.
I'm aware.
Not in front of it.
Alright.
Uh, the next meeting's on the fourteenth, gentlemen. We can, we can award on fourteen. I, 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 I'll tell them today when I give them the list of buildings, I gotta know something by the thirteen.
Alright, I'm just voting. Vote this party here. I'm hoping y'all just turn this card over. It just happens to be a dead.
You carrying a rail where you ain't sure.
Oh, my God.
Alright, I'm gonna turn it over, and on the fourteenth, y'all flip that card, and that's the way I'm voting.
Okay.
If you think it's zero cost, then you're doing something wrong.
Alright.
Let's go, Mr. President.
Do we have any need for?
Additional business.
Any more additional business?
Any more additional business?
Nope.
Oh, executive session?
Oh, yeah. I make a motion.
Judge, you need to see us? Judge just likes to see you anyway.
You've got some of Rankin County's best and brightest with future leaders in here, and I just wanted to sit in and explain it to them after the meeting was over.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, they introduced themselves at the start of the meeting.
Some come in late too. Yeah. The ones that come in late. Yeah, yeah. I'm sure the teacher's watching. She's gonna see who come in late, who was on time.
It's all long video.
That's right.
All long video.
Alright, I make a motion to discuss the need for executive session.
Second.
Jay made a motion to discuss the need for executive session. Steve seconded that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
For what are we going in for?
Land property.
Property acquisition.
Land acquisition. Alright, motion to go into executive session for land acquisition.
Second.
Jay motion, Steve seconded.
Jay made a motion. Steve seconded the motion. Going to need to executive session. All in favor?